How they have to do with that.
I'm okay with that, but if we don't need to do blue bags, we save, you know, money for not buying blue bags. It's rather not recycling.
Also, your timeline is not the fact that they're requiring these containers in.
They used to and now they're not or not. We don't know. Ranger is not articulated to us except for the guy who worked in the yard, right? So the guy who worked in the yard looking brunt and they're saying, we're not recycling. So you don't need to do.
All in the same year, but all doesn't recycle. Go into a landfill because the market for selling plastic as evaporated. There is no form and uh losing yourself. They have not been there. You know, as it was intended.
I can tell you this. Really well. I know. I don't think I even saw it.
Oh.
I mean, I'll look at it, but I'm pretty sure.
Oh, you could. But there's. Take a look at it, see what it tells about me.
Like, you know. Hey, if you can get one of your.
No.
It doesn't say. I read it too. But call for he rattles hands. And I signed another contract with Calbridge. Those guys, they don't say anything that I've ever known. And then. I recycle.
Or maybe not.
So I said. Sixteen, that's why I'm. Look. I. And. I don't. I'm not. And.
Back for.
So. Jayden, a simple. Recycling. And.
I find that weird because. I'm a really young man. It's really hard and blue. And that's like three different containers, right? One for. Yep. For natural and one.
Then we have to.
And we.
I'm like, that's.
Right. And we used to have that in the previous, but Granger went out. And my sister, we could recycle. This bag, you can get on Amazon.
Yeah.
I mean, so. You just want me to find out the reason.
Wait, if you're. Contract doesn't tell you that we were something you have every cycle product and that they were separated. Collect separately in terms of. And and then it's a move. But I still want to know if they're recycling, if they're not recycling. Then what should I worry about? Taking my stuff to the basement and recycling. Being a kid.
About that minus certain. My recycling.
Yeah, there you go. It's a really bad. The White House was on that. He brings it up all the time.
It is seven oh one P M. We can start off our meeting with a moment of silence, please. If we can stand for a pledge of wishes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. On the nation. And it was well, when they're repeating those.
Just a friendly reminder for those here and present, make sure that the cell phones are either turned off. And silent and counting numbers. They have a lot of time to put away. Thirty third, we're going to take real call for us, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Reed, Fred Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Davis.
Crescent.
French.
Here.
In there.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
Some more.
Support.
Do we have any additions or deletions? All in favor, say, I'm sorry.
Aren't we going to add something we talked about?
It's on the agenda.
But it's a new one.
It's it's on the one that you have in front of you.
Oh, it's on the noon. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Close. All right, so we are going to start off our meeting this evening with a couple of presentations. We have Rod Otten here from our Alvin Healthcare Alliance to speak to us on the chronic disease. Right? For yours.
Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight about talk with you, but I seek input. Uh, we at the Alvin Healthcare Alliance are one of the projects that we're currently involved with is uh, the chronic disease work group. We call it the Alvin Chronic Disease Work Group. So I just want to take two minutes to talk, tell you a little bit about it, uh, why we're doing it, uh, share some data with you to help understand and tell the story. And then, uh, at the end, really seek input, uh, and thanks to Donovan, who's part of our work group and providing opportunity really to be able to share and get input. I appreciate it. If we could have the next slide, that'd be great. The um, uh, the genesis of the Alvin Chronic Disease Work Group came out of of the two thousand nineteen Community Health Needs Assessment for, um, as you may know, hospitals are required to do community health needs assessments. And two thousand nineteen Community Health Needs Assessment, um, provided a lot of data, not just for Alvin, for the whole county. And part of that, uh, then as a next step, uh, the Coordinating Council of Calhoun County, um, kind of provided the opportunity for uh, groups both in Battle Creek primarily in Alvin to uh, really look at some of the data and uh, provide some direction as it relates to uh, what we do with that in particular, and we're going that to just a minute. Uh, with that though, uh, from that, then we had the Population Health Alliance, which again is a county-based collaborative, uh, that in uh, includes many different organizations in the county. Um, took it and uh, from that, we created both a Battle Creek-based Chronic Disease Work Group as well as an Alvin-based Chronic Disease Work Group. The Alvin Healthcare Alliance is taking the lead on the the one here in Alvin, so that's what we're really referencing tonight. Uh, if we could have the next slide, then. Again, uh, mentioned the two different work groups that were developed. A framework for that really was to take the data and from that, um, really have some very focused uh, work and efforts around, um, some of the findings around chronic disease. Uh, and then report it back to the Coordinating Council as the work is being done. Next slide, please. Um, we, when we started the work group, we created kind of the uh, a bullet point of values that we wanted to live by and really be guided by as we worked, did the work that we're we were about to do, um, and they're here. So what do we mean by community-driven and supported by content experts? We really wanted this initiative to be driven by community members. That we know the data, the data speaks specifically about certain chronic diseases and the prevalence in particular here in Alvin, but we wanted to make sure the efforts were not being driven by community organizations, but community members living in the most affected areas. Secondly, we wanted them, the initiative to be neighborhood-based. We know the data tells us where from a chronic disease perspective, uh, there is a high prevalence of things like diabetes, obesity, sedentary lifestyle, hypertension, high blood pressure, et cetera. And so we took the data and looking at that, we're able to identify a couple of key areas in Alvin to focus, again, these neighborhood-based initiatives. Third, we wanted to make sure that we weren't just creating interventions, but we are using evidence-based practices currently in place. And there are literally hundreds of evidence-based practices around the country, around the world that address diabetes, et cetera. So as a group, we have spent the last couple of months really looking at uh, the formation of the group, really making sure that we have a good representation from the committee as well as content experts and going deeper than in looking at what evidence-based practices we're going to use uh, in the work that we're doing. Um, the fourth is really it being an asset-based initiative, and what we mean by this is that we want to, uh, working in neighborhoods, make sure we're taking advantage of the assets of each of the neighborhoods. And when you're doing work around sedentary lifestyles, B C D, et cetera, some of those assets can, and I heard you talking when I came in, about parks and recreation and so on, some of those assets can be the neighbor or the parks uh, that are in the neighborhood. What more can we be doing to encourage activity, et cetera? They could be other buildings, healthcare buildings or churches where we could do education around diabetes and these types of things. So we've really tried to be very intentional about looking at what are the assets in these neighborhoods that we can make sure that we're utilizing as we're moving forward? And then finally, we want to make sure everything that we're doing is driven by data and that we have the ability to measure what we're doing. Um, and and at the end, or not just at the end, but as we're doing this, we're using data and measurement to really understand, are we making a difference? Are the initiatives that we're doing improving these three key areas and so on? Um, next slide, please. This is just a little smaller. Sorry, I I know I my glasses only take me so far, but these are all the various agencies involved in the work group. And um, at the end, at the bottom, though, you'll see we also have eight community members that are a part of the work group. Um, part of what I'm going to ask you at the end, though, is we'd like to have more. We'd like to have more community members involved in engaging this activity, and so we're asking for advice and how we approach that. But uh, as you can see, it's a very diverse uh, representation of organizations that uh, are involved with healthcare, but also social determinants of health. Again, these site, these socioeconomic drivers of healthcare outcomes such as poverty uh, and that type of thing to where we're looking at organizations and specifically are addressing some of those issues. Next slide, please. Uh, this is some of the data that again helps tell the story in terms of our, of what we're focusing on in terms of our efforts. And uh, when we talk about Census Track thirty-three and thirty-six, we'll be coming to it in a couple maps in a minute. Those are really, again, the uh, the precincts that um, Vivian and Donovan and Lynn and Nora um, are served. Uh, so not completely, but parts of them. And so when we talk about this, we're talking about specific neighborhoods that again, where we see the data as we continue to go down here, we'll see in terms of the uh, some of the drivers of that and some of the actual data around diabetes, et cetera. So this tells us a little bit about Census Track thirty-six and thirty-three in terms of median age, uh, in terms of race, poverty, uh, et cetera, household sizes and so on. So it again helps us better understand the neighborhoods that we're looking at and what uh, what helps us to know how to better serve. Uh, next slide.
What is the title of the the last column? The picture was over.
Previous page, the back one.
The previous page. No.
If you have error.
Okay.
One more.
Okay.
Oh, so um, for instance, we have a couple, a couple percentage of um, of residents living here in Alvin are bilingual. Spanish.
I was asking about the third column. Well, can't see.
I'm sorry.
It's in the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. And you know what? Uh, let me. I'm trying. I don't have it in front of me either, so.
Can you move that, Jill? I drive to.
Didn't know.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
Is that the state average or something like that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it would, yeah. Up arrow, two more. Up arrow.
The other way.
First.
Up arrow. There you go. One more, one more. There.
Okay.
So we've got, again, this is a Calhoun County-based initiative as far as looking at chronic disease. So we're comparing these two census tracks with Calhoun County in general. As we'll see in a minute here, though, we actually are looking at a number of of key um, areas in the county, not just Alvin, but really looking at that fits some of these demographic definitions and so on. Let's go to the next slide, please. So the, and what that's these here, so we have Census Track thirty-three and thirty-six here in Alvin. These other census tracks are primarily in the Battle Creek area. Uh, and and so when we're looking at, these are again socially vulnerable, what we consider to be by definition, socially or vulnerable uh, geographic locations, okay? And based on census tracks, there are a total of thirty-nine census tracks in the county. Okay? Again, just just helps us to better understand the community, et cetera. Next slide, please. Here again, looking at one thing, life expectancy, uh, we can see that in Alvin, the two there plus a couple in Battle Creek, life expectancy at as low as sixty-two in some of the census tracks in uh, Battle Creek and in Alvin seventy-five, seventy-nine. Uh, right now, nationally speaking, the average life expectancy is somewhere around seventy-nine to eighty. Uh, uh, it was higher before COVID. Uh, so, but anyway, so it tells you again, just in terms of the demer- demographics and so on. Next slide, please. Uh, this again is the map of Census Track thirty-three. I'm sorry, it's hard to see. Um, but obviously the west side, et cetera. Um, if we had the time and interest, the two health indicators, demographic information provides a lot more information. This is on the um, my Calhoun website, by the way. Uh, so it's publicly available. Uh, but again, it tells us a little bit more about each census track. Next census track, please. Or next slide, please. And again, you can see here the rankings as far as um, Census Track uh, thirty-six, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, um, where census track rates as far as the thirty-nine to uh, uh, census tracks, um, obesity at thirty-two, sedentary lifestyle thirty-eight, adults with diabetes thirty-six. So we chose uh, some of the ones that had the higher uh, again, the higher would be the less favorable, what you want, don't want. Uh, and that's how I came about as a group determining which ones we were going to focus on. These were not pre-done. This was decided by the group in terms of which ones we're going to focus on. Next slide, please. Uh, again, this sense track thirty-six, the um, the, you can kind of see in the blue where that's at in Alvin. Next slide, please. And again, you can see rankings from this particular census track as far as obesity, sedentary lifestyle, diabetes. Uh, and uh, again, why, why the group chose uh, these three particular chronic diseases? Okay? Next slide, please. Um, this is another, again, helps tell the story. We know that diabetes and uh, obesity, et cetera, they're drivers of this. And so when you look at one example, food insecurity, okay? We know food insecurity is a real challenge, not just in Alvin, but in many communities. Uh, but if you look at um, again, where uh, the most vulnerable populations as far as food insecurity are in Calhoun County, it's hard to see that top one, but at the bottom one, you'll see on Battle Creek, the darker colors are where it's uh, most effective. Okay, so in Battle Creek, you can see a couple neighborhoods there and Alvin again, it highlights Census Track thirty-three, thirty-six. So we know that, again, food insecurity is a significant problem in these particular neighborhoods here. Again, just helping the group decide in terms of our focus and so on. Right? Next slide, please. Uh, so I mentioned the uh, the evidence-based practices, the website that I alluded to. If you, if you press on one of these, it'll bring up several different evidence-based practices, but the group really went through much more thorough exercise than that to determine which practices that we're going to to uh, to do. So I'm telling you this because there is a great effort going on with lots of parks, lots of community members uh, to really focus in these three areas in the neighborhoods of Census Track thirty-three and thirty-six, using the assets within those neighborhoods. What we really, to be successful, though, we really do want more um, residents involved and engaged. And um, I've read it's been very helpful in terms of helping to recruit, which I'm very grateful for. Alfred and I worked together at the Alvin Healthcare Alliance. But we're really looking and I'm really just, just asking for ideas and input on how we can engage more community members living in these neighborhoods to be involved with the work that we're doing around chronic disease. So.
Rod, what year was that data collected?
Two thousand nineteen.
Nineteen?
Yeah, there, uh, there was another one done this year, uh, but the data that we were working from is from the two thousand nineteen needs assessment. So that, again, for, uh, I I wanted to share with the council what uh, one of the efforts going on in the community right now to address chronic diseases. And uh, again, we're delighted to have both Vivian and Donovan participating in this particular work group. Of course, Lynn, we works, does a lot of work in food insecurity. Uh, uh, so we're, we've got a lot of engaged residents involved. We really want to get more involved, so. Not sure how to, how to do this, so I'm like, I'm asking for guidance. You know, we would, we want to get more community involvement, and if you have some ideas on how to do that, I welcome that.
You have any questions for Rod? Councilmembers?
Yes. Uh, how's it going, Rod?
Good.
All right, um, the slide with the food insecurity on there, um, I think it was attached to Census Track thirty-six.
Uh, yeah, we would have had one for thirty-three as well.
Okay, now, um, there's a grocery store attached to um, or adjacent to Census Track thirty-six. I think it may overlap a little bit. Um. So what, what constitutes um the food insecurity?
Food insecurity is a number of things. Uh, if a distance, when we talk about distance, and I want to be sensitive to time here, too. Uh, we talk about food deserts. Food desert is in a community where it's hard for members, especially folks who don't have good transportation, so on, to get to the grocery store to be able to get the things they need. So there are parts of, uh, like the Census Track further south is further away from the family there. So there is a bigger challenge of just geographically speaking for that. That's one piece, but then there's also affordability. Uh, there's what, what selection, what offerings are available at that? Uh, food sovereignty is really more about culturally appropriate foods available and so on. So there are a number of factors that we look at when it comes to food security and food insecurity. Distance is, of course, one of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course. Of course, healthy is uh, is basically what Rod said. Uh, healthy food is what a lot of times we don't have there. It's a grocery store, but if you go into the grocery store, the least expensive or the less expensive foods, basically, are foods that are not very healthy, for sure, so.
Sure, correct.
And it lends itself to food insecurity because people get what they can afford.
Exactly. So we are access to critical uh, issue that we're trying to address. We've got wonderful resources in the community through the community gardens and other types of gardens. So we're really trying to figure out, how do we create more synergy to make, again, from an access perspective, uh, people who might have challenges affording some of the food that we're talking about, make it more easily available?
Any other questions for us? Well, you appreciate that, and if, yeah, if we can come up with ways to help them out, I'm sure it would be appreciated.
I appreciate that, and if I didn't uh, address you in a more formal way, I didn't know the the rules are on that, so I apologize.
We appreciate that.
Vivian and Donovan.
Yeah, okay. Can you um, email them? Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, um, we have the Arbor Day proclamation, so I will go ahead and read that. The official proclamation for Tree City USA, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special, a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, eating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source, a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Victoria Garcia Snyder, Mayor of the City of Alvin, here I proclaim April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two as Arbor Day in the City of Alvin, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Date is this day, September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Six weeks later.
Is there a rain date to?
All right, so we also have with us this two new hires that we have. Um, first is our new director and treasurer, David Clark. So, Mr. Clark, would you like to come on up, introduce yourselves and give us a little information about you, all right?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Mayor, uh, my name is David Clark. I'm a CPA. I graduated from Grand Valley State in nineteen eighty-seven. I worked for a CPA firm for nine years called Markowski and Company. I ran my own audits of governmental units, wrote my own reports. I left there in nineteen ninety-six and started a auto dealership and built it from eight employees to over a hundred. We had five different dealerships in three different states. And I got out of that two thousand seventeen to take care of my wife who was sick at the time and uh, got back into public accounting a couple of years later. And uh, did anything and everything in public accounting that you could think of. I decided to take a different job this year because I was getting tired of all the hours for tax season. And I wanted to concentrate on one entity. And so I hired in about ten days ago. And so far, so good.
Excellent.
I would like to say that uh, the two ladies that have been helping me quite a bit for the first two weeks, again, I've only been here for ten days. Connie, she's really good. She's really helped me out a lot. She's a hard-working person. And Nicole, even though she's been here uh, since August, she's really been helping me a lot. There were some things that were not done prior to me getting here that I had to get caught up. And so, uh, as time goes on, I think I'll be a great help to you guys, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate.
Thanks for saying.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to the city.
Yep.
And we also have um, Kevin O'Brien, and we all know Kevin. Um, but he has um, taken on the responsibility of our new director of Public Services. So um, Kevin is our go-to guy now when we have. And then we also have Virgie Ammerman, who is our new president of our Economic Development Corporation. Many of us met Virgie already through um, the process of getting her hired in. But Virgie, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to come on up um, because we do have people who watch on YouTube.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, councilpeople. I appreciate your time tonight and letting me be here, and I really appreciate Michelle not taking my picture because I don't have any makeup on, so we negotiated. Um, I've been on the run today, so this is my first day. I'm officially the um, yeah, President, CEO of the Alvin Economic Development Corporation, and I'm trying to get used to saying that, so thank you for letting me practice. Um, I have a pocketful of business cards I'm happy to share, and um, I have some really good ideas and I'm excited to get connected with the board later this evening. We're sharing some emails. And uh, I have some great ideas. I'm currently, uh, I don't know what you know about me. I'm a native of Alvin, graduated about eighty-four, once a wildcat, always a wildcat, so um, and my mom uh, lives in the, in the neighborhood and my brother lives here also, so I have three grandchildren. They go to school in Homer, so I'm, I'm there a lot, so um, I'm, I'm, and I live currently just south of Detroit, so I'm interested in getting back here eventually, so I'm working on house hunting. And um, I too am a CPA, so maybe Dave and I can get together and talk, talk taxes. Um, uh, MBA, I've got my graduate degree in political management from George Washington University during the pandemic, trying to use my downtime effectively, and uh, I ran for office, uh, so you might see me, um, you might have seen me, I ran for state rep uh, in um, District thirty-six, uh, which is downriver, so I did not win the primaries, so I'm here instead, so. It was one of the others for me, I would still think so. Um, I'm super excited. I've got all kinds of new ideas and I'm just anxious to get started, so. Um, I'm super excited, I've got all kinds of new ideas and I'm just anxious to get started, so thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, and welcome to the city.
I'm sure you've seen Virgie around, she has not taken any time to get back into the theme here in Albion, so. That's much appreciated and noticed, Councilman Williams.
Yes, Virgie, can we get those cards?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask afterwards, so. First day in Congress, that's good.
Nah, it's good.
Oh.
Uh, Kevin O'Brien, I just wanted to take a moment, thank the city for the opportunity for the Director of Public Services position. And I'm looking forward to another successful year with the City of Albion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
The new responsibilities. Alright, next we have the proclamation, um, for the Michigan Southwest Second Jurisdiction Church of God. Uh, for the Women's Thirty-seventh Annual Convention. Whereas it is a sense of this council to recognize the dedication and commitment of local institutions. Would distinguish themselves through faith-based excellence. And whereas Grace Temple Church of God in Christ was founded on January ninth, nineteen seventy-two. And had by Pastor Robert Lee and First Lady Lily Brown. As an expression of their international vision for spiritual empowerment and education. Whereas Pastor Stephen Curtis and First Lady Diane Williams. Presently Shepherd Grace Temple has a recognized, respected and active participant in the city. Region and Michigan Southwest Second Jurisdiction of the Church of God in Christ. And whereas Grace Temple has provided over fifty years of spiritual leadership and faith-inspired improvement. To civic life in the city of Albion, Michigan. And whereas Grace Temple is the traditional host of the annual Michigan Southwest Second Jurisdiction Women's Convention. On September twenty-third and twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two in Albion, which directly contributes. To the spiritual, cultural and economic wellness of the residents in our city. And whereas this year's convention theme is Women of God. There is a time, a purpose and a season. Which is a particularly relative theme in light of the current needs of our local and global community. And whereas the Grace Temple congregation is home to many influential Albion and regional women leaders. In civics, business and education, including First Lady Williams. Current Mayor Pro Tem Nora Jackson, Councilwoman Marcola Lawler. And District Commissioner Latonya Gamble. And whereas Grace Temple continues to cultivate women leaders and positively influence our community in ways informed. By their interpretation of scripture, belief in redemption love and commitment to sharing the good news of everlasting hope. Now therefore, I Victoria Garcia Snyder, Mayor of the City of Albion, on behalf of the Albion City Council. Under Michigan Southwest Second Jurisdiction Church of God in Christ Department of the Women's Thirty-seventh Annual Women's Convention.
Is that in our packet?
The proclamation?
No, it's no.
It's online, but.
Alright, so we do not have a public hearing, but at this time, we have opportunity for public comments. So if there's anybody here that would like to stand and have comments to counsel?
On the agenda.
What was that?
On the agenda only.
Yes, on the agenda only. Do we have anybody on? Alright, consent counter in our packets, we had our August thirtieth special meeting minutes. The September sixth study session and regular council session minutes. September thirtieth special session, the permit for the Albion to big read. And then the assembly permit for helping babies on September twenty-fourth. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Alright. Next we have our second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two of eight. For tobacco products, vapor products and alternative nicotine.
Motion.
I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Um, so this, um, ordinance just, uh, brings the, um, local ordinance into compliance with changes that were made at the state level. The state of Michigan recently changed the, uh, legal age to, uh, purchase and possess, uh, nicotine and alternative nicotine products from eighteen to twenty-one. And tangentially has also changed the ability to sell, give or furnish a tobacco or alternative nicotine product. To another person from eighteen to twenty-one. So this, um, keeps basically everything the same, it just raises the age from eighteen to twenty-one on our local ordinance to bring us into compliance with state law.
We have any questions for the attorney? City clerk, may I?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Mayor Snyder.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two fee schedule amendment?
So move.
Support. Chief Kip. So we, um, we are adding, uh, an additional fifty-dollar refundable fee. For anybody that is looking to rent one of the pavilions in our park, so that is added into the fee schedule. So, do we have any questions on this?
Is this any pavilion or just the circle?
So I believe this is for any art pavilion.
Yeah, okay.
So this is what we, um, discussed at our, our Recreation Advisory Commission meeting. And what it was is a refundable fifty dollars, meaning that, uh, it can be refunded to you and it would not be refunded to you. Meaning that after you clean up, you need to clean up the park, clean up the area. So that was the reason for that deposit. So to let everyone know that, that is, that deposit would be refunded to you. But there are stipulations that are in the contract that lets you know that the park has to be cleaned up. That space, the pavilion, the small and the big one, that area needs to be taken care of before you leave.
Attorney Hartness?
So, so just so I'm clear, so that there's not like a conflict in the B schedule. It's still a rental fee of seventy-five dollars for resident, a hundred feet, a hundred dollars for a non-resident, and in addition. Kind of refundable, okay.
Yes, correct, and that's what, that's where more of the, uh, expl- explanation would be inside the contract. And that is what the individual that is over the park should always remember to go over that contract with the individual, so they get the gist of that. Thank you.
Do we have any questions on this? City clerk, may I?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Discussion on combining the parks and recreation department. We did discuss this briefly, um, at our study session. Um, and, um, Mayor Brooke M. Jackson had brought this to the table so that we can discuss further. About looking at the possibilities of combining two, or funding. So Mayor Brooke M. Jackson, do you want to add additional comments?
I'm really not add anymore, I just, I just think it's good that at this, um, time from the seven to where we get out, some people are not here and some people are not on. But just no more to see what the pros and the cons are to be able to put. Tapley would be the funds of the park and the recreation together to see if that makes sense to help out our parks. And being clean and me, and maybe even hiring individuals or getting more of the recreation out in the areas as, uh, we just had, uh. Rod come and talk to us about, you know, obesity and high blood pressure and all those things. And with him saying that I can use those words right now because there was a thought of, um, even being able to put exercising. Equipment and stuff in here, and then, you know, so that also the soccer fields and all the other different recreation areas could be combined in. Hopefully they could get more, um, dollars and cents to keep all these things going and looking.
Yes, Councilmember Lawler?
Okay, thank you, so can we ask the new, uh, director to speak to this? Give us some pros and cons, and can we do it, can we not do it, or somebody wants to look at? Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I, I won't put you on the spot, thank you. Okay, it's just a discussion, so yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, so as we move forward along this, this discussion and, um. And I can certainly have this discussion with our, our finance, our new finance director, like I said during our study session, the one thing we really have to be mindful of is. Some of that money from one of those funds is coming to us from village, so we have to be very careful about how it gets spent. Because it has to, it can only be spent for that specific village purpose. So I think hypothetically, from a legal perspective, it's hypothetically possible, but we have to be mindful of that, that we're not spending village money on something that isn't expressly contemplated by the village.
Sounds good. So Mayor Brooke M. Jackson, I know you looked, you looked into, you have one municipality that has.
They combined, um, more than just this, they had some on the outside as well. That came together to make it, um, where they could get that more dollars and cents by combining, like I said, their soccers, their trails. All those different things that came from city to city and museums and all that, because that was all recreation and swimming pools and everything.
I'm just curious, are you by chance thinking about like, almost like an inter-local agreement between surrounding municipalities?
First my thought was just us starting, and then when I seen that, I was like, wow, they made that even bigger than what I was even thinking.
Because I, I, I mean, I will say this, I am aware that there, and I would, I could bring it to council at a future meeting, there is. A statute in Michigan that allows for, I think they call it like a recreation authority or parks authority, I can't remember which it's called, but we can enter into an agreement. For with multiple municipalities, like surrounding municipalities, the idea being it's a bigger pool flowing all in one place. I mean.
Yes.
Certainly you can discuss that, and I'm aware that, that it exists. I don't currently represent any municipalities that have that, but it is, that is an option for council.
Well, like I said, my first thought was that until I started looking in it and I seen it as well. And I was like, we do have soccer, we have a theater that can help him continue to keep soccer going, because they like to keep soccer going year round. And he needs the dollars and cents for that, and then we have probably haven't got the tennis court and everything to take care of yet. I know there's money allocated for that, but you know, some, that's that one time, we need to be able to keep those things up. Once we get stuff in L, we don't want to fall out the wayside, we want to be consistent in keeping what we have. And it's not that easy, just one is given to it. Especially how we talk about not having the employees here, but you can afford them. That money should be able to help us keep those employees here.
So you can pay, um.
We have to check in, as I said, pros and cons, I'm speaking a little bit too much, but just in case that's it.
Okay. Sound good.
Give it a first play of a staff salary.
As I said, pros and cons, I just spoke it out, I'm talking like, okay, so you don't have to take this money out of here, you can keep paying them out of what we have here. And not all of what we need to do for ourselves, maintenance and all that out of the same pie. We could have additional money to take care of, maintenance.
So maybe we can get to a point where you're finding, like you can present what you've been able to find, then our new director can give us information about what he's been able to look at. Bring this back to the table.
Okay.
Will we go with that? And then also, by us under the conference, we might be able to ask other municipalities to see what they do in regards to parks and recreation.
Their pros and cons.
Yes, exactly.
Sounds good.
Yep. Alright, do I have a motion to approve of the release of the conditional assignment of the land contract for twelve thirty-two Adam Street?
So move. Support.
Attorney Hartness?
So, like we discussed in the study session, this is a very, very old, um, what is a, it's structured in a, in a very odd way. It was called a conditional assignment of a land contract. Realistically, the way it's set up though, it's basically a mortgage, it's an old CBDG mortgage from nineteen seventy-nine. Um, the property apparently got transferred multiple times since nineteen seventy-nine. But they transferred it being a quick claim deed, which means there was no title work ever done. So none of the subsequent owners were ever aware that the City of Albion basically had this mortgage on the property. So now there's, uh, uh, an owner who actually, or I'm sorry, a seller and a buyer, uh, that closed on the property on Friday. They had contacted us saying, hey, what's this mortgage? And we looked and like, sure enough, it's a mortgage from forty years ago, um. They, I did verify with finance, they, um, they received a, a payment, a check for payment in full. Um, for the entire balance of the, uh, note owed to the city, so they're paid up. So what you're voting on tonight is to authorize me to sign a, um, release and discharge of the conditional land contract assignment, which is basically a mortgage discharge. So that can be recorded and they can clear up the title now that we've been paid.
Do we know what is on the property?
I'm sorry?
Do we know what is on the property?
There, I didn't, I didn't.
A Google map search during the previous meeting indicates that there are like single-family residents that's maybe twenty by twenty at the most.
Do we have any other questions for our attorney on this? City clerk, may I?
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Future agenda items? For the upcoming meeting? Councilmember Reed?
I'd like to discuss what could be done about, there's a lot of kids that's riding those little things around, no lights. I started to back out my driveway yesterday and almost hit one, because it was just beginning to get dark. And it's here, and no lights on anything, he's just rolling in and out.
Are you talking about those two wheels?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think we need to.
Those little two wheels, you stand, your feet this way, you lean forward and.
Oh, a hoverboard?
That's a hoverboard, yeah, that's the one, thank you.
Are you talking about a hoverboard?
Come on, go cards, aren't you?
Oh, boy, in the boat, babe.
There's what?
They're all like people in Canada, really, they said it's a hoverboard.
I mean, like a boat had.
Yeah. Well, these, what shape are these tall?
The little.
Yeah, they're.
Or, or, or.
Right.
Three, really. That's what those. They are, those are those. No, please, no, please, no, please, no. That is what that is. I, I followed this right on where he's going and I, I said to him, do you realize that has no lights? I almost hit you here, you could have been killed. Please don't.
There are a few that are cooperative, many are not. I agree, it's something you can do, but exactly how to address that, I'm not sure.
It would be incredible if we could find a landowner who was insured and could. Maybe, uh, set up a place. Right, and then possibly set up a place where, um, those kids can ride safely.
The ideal place, um, you don't get no money off of it.
Yeah, I mean, Alvin's a very rural community, um, I know a lot of the smaller communities, people use, utilize those as transportation. Quite a bit, but with us being a more populous, um, community, it's not necessarily the safest thing for the kids to be riding on the streets. But, um, for the most part, I don't see them out there bothering people, but it is a safety concern and definitely something we, we should be, um, observing of. And if someone knows of someone that may have some property that they may want to facilitate some so the kids can have a place to ride. Let's, uh, let's bring that to the table as a, as a viable option.
And we, and we do try to educate them to some of the new styles and about the laws and what they tend to do. Um, like I said, many of them don't always want to stop for us because they know we can't touch them. And, and so we don't.
Some segues we could use.
But I will also try to. Yeah, they're saying one of the.
And maybe with colder weather that may reduce the number of kids out about, especially late and. Any other future agenda items? Yes, Councilwoman Lawler?
Yes, thank you. Um, can we have some type of um uh report about our trees, which ones have been done, how many more we gotta do? When is the contract up or um the person that takes care of our trees?
There's one tree report.
I haven't shared it, you can tell me that, so I was again.
Okay, that's good.
Good. And the other, yeah, Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, I got a couple, um. And oh, Inspector, um. Do we have a um like a listing of vendors or businesses that are set up to do business with the city? Or do we do we advertise the bids or post them anywhere?
So they don't get me specific.
Um. Yeah, please tell us.
Sorry, buddy.
So just, let's say uh lawn care, um I know we had the HVAC unit done not too long ago. So like stuff like that, I know that HVAC may have went through um Whitman and associates.
Well, they, they might have looked into it, but I believe former Director Miller selected. I think we had to put that out to bid and.
So are you talking about what we're doing in RPF?
Yeah, so do we?
So you're, you're kind of asking a couple of things, like we don't really have like a list of hey, our window is broken, who's gonna come fix that, hey, we need to replace, you know, re- redrywall, re, you know, refit an office, we don't really have a list of people like that.
Okay. Do communities typically have um like a registry of of vendors?
I think that becomes more typical the larger.
Larger.
Is, that's something that I'd like to get on, just a registry of uh, whether it's contractors that the city uses or just the contractors that regularly do business in the city and thereby we have all their information, we know that they pull permits for the jobs that they need to, we know that they're registered and are pulling income tax in the city. Um, I'd like to get, I'd like to work a little bit more with uh Eric. To get a list on that, he and I actually started down the road to that project, uh mostly just trying to work backwards, but.
Okay, so what's, what's currently the process of posting those bids? Are they on the city's website?
So we're a member of M I D O, which is the state bidding system. Um, and so we accept, because of that, we can gain uh access to anybody who has a state bid on any service. And those bids have already been submitted and vetted by the state and accepted by the state, so we can use those businesses that have already had those bids for those particular things. Um, we also have the ability to bid, and I can't remember what that program is, because I've only had to use it once, but there's a way that we can post bids online statewide um that people can go to and bid on. Um, that's how I know we did the contracting for the code enforcement mowing. Um, and I know we've done other things with it, I'm just not familiar with other departments have done. Public services has been, spent more time using that than any other department, I believe.
Okay.
Um, because of the nature of the work that they do. Um, sometimes it's just a matter of trying to find somebody that can actually do the work for us, because we, it's bit, it's difficult to find contractors for some things. Um, and so when we find somebody who's reliable, if it's not something that necessarily has to be bid, like uh uh maintenance, heating and cooling systems and so forth, we'll stick with one person that's been reliable and does a good job for us, so.
Okay.
It, it does kind of vary depending on what the service needed is, so, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, calling anything over five thousand dollars has to be bid out.
Yeah, it's a non, non budget, like, yeah. Unless, unless we.
Right.
Budgeted first.
Except for like engineering services and things like that.
But it's engineering, architecture, legal.
Right.
And I think.
Okay, um, yeah, the reason I ask, a lot of the entrepreneurs here in town, they ask about doing business with the city, um what steps do they have to take in order to do it? I figured if we had a streamlined system in place already, I could just plug and play them. Um, but if, if not, and you want to um to go forward with that, I mean, I'd imagine that'd be a helpful resource to the city as well.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're wanting to do a couple of things, just from having a, a list of contractors that regularly work locally, because we don't have a contractor every time in, in the city limits. Anyone that we work with regularly, or rather does work in Albion regularly, registers uh with a, they've got a form, they fill out for Eric to start unfolding. My department does not put out a lot of bids, we don't spend our money that way. Uh, it's, you know, largely checking that the folks who are taking bids, whether it's for us or for residents of the community are doing so legally for all their construction renovation or things like that. We could look at instituting a contractor registration, that's something I've discussed uh with some of our um uh administrative staff, uh safe bill, it's not something I'm really, I, I don't have an opinion on that yet, it's just something we're looking into, but certainly be open for anything.
Perfect.
I'm showing my age, but um in, back in the day, I remember reading in the local newspaper, every time there was a bid that went out, we'd post some, the city would post for bids. Do we no longer do that?
Um, it depends on what the bid is, because of the statewide bidding system that uh.
We can't do both.
Well, when, when uh uh Mr. McClary was city manager, he got us linked into the statewide bidding system, and that kind of took the replacement of that, because if you're interested in government contracts, that's where everybody goes. I did not have a lot of uh success with it when I did the mowing contracts, um we really didn't get bids for that, I was more or less begging people to do it in the community, and, and they, they went on and bid through that process, and it does make it easier for us to manage the process by far. But um we didn't get a lot of bids from outside of here. I do think the first time they did it, we had a bid from Lansing, and then we chose only to do part of that with them, and they didn't bid the second time, so.
I'm just thinking in terms of, I think where uh Councilwoman Williams is going is, you know, if we've got professionals in the community.
That's business.
Wouldn't it be nice if we could at least give them an opportunity to do the bidding, and I don't know what sort of certification needs to happen at the state level to get part of that?
Right. Um. I think people just need to know where it is, how to, how to bid on stuff on it, so.
Yeah.
Now, and one thing maybe you can advise the people who are here, maybe to get on the registry. You know, so.
Right, no, and that, that's, that's the reason for the line of questioning, the steps we needed to take in order to um put people in line with being able to do business um here in the community.
And once they're on the registry, you know, as local taxpaying citizens, then you know, there will be
Right.
preferential treatment, you know, so to speak, because we want to support our owns.
And I said, my experiences with the lawn mowing business, and, and we do have local people that are doing that, that bid on that. Um, and it was just a matter of letting them know how to go through the process, and they did it, so I'd be happy to try to get that information out to you, you can share it with constituents, so.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, that'd be perfect, yeah, um. Because it's definitely a lot, yeah, the TikTok video. No, but there's definitely a lot of people who are interested in um doing business with, with the uh local government.
And it also wouldn't let, wouldn't hurt for them to let us know that too, because sometimes we don't know businesses that are interested in doing some of that work, and it, it might be people that were just not asking because we didn't know they existed even.
Gotcha.
Would you consider people who are not registered with the, with the company or with the service?
Oh, yeah, um, I don't think you have to be registered with the service, because I, I know um Stewart's bid on the lawn mowing service um and have that contract right now, um and so they did it through that. I, I don't think you have to be a member or anything to bid on stuff that's on there, so. You just have to know that it's there and you can look up what type of services that people are looking for, and you could bet on stuff throughout the state, so.
Yeah, I saw them guys out earlier too, they were doing a good job.
Yeah.
This is just the attorney to me, as a matter of, I guess.
Yeah, council rules and procedure, we've kind of drifted away from future agenda items and go full blown discussions, very interesting discussion, a lot of.
Maybe the future agenda item should be a discussion on this issue, you know?
Should play them, I was looking at.
Appreciate it.
Any other agenda items? Next, special items, oh. Yes, please, yes, Councilwoman Lawler, okay, thank you. Um, is, is there, can there be some um type of report for the Pine Street um water, um is it fixed? Because if it's fixed, can we get the road? Okay. I think it's, it's on the corner, it's one on the corner of Pine Street in Monroe, and then it's another issue on Pine Street in Ionia. I think it was in the process of getting taken care of. Um, but it needed some type of new repair, so I'm just wondering about it, I mean, get an update.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks so much. Any other future agenda items?
Well, I would like to add to the tree report in terms of tree, because after, after having a tree fall in my yard today, uh last night, uh I wonder if, I know going back several years ago, uh there was uh some, I guess we had someone in charge of trees at that time, many years ago. And she identified potential problems, you know, in terms of diseased trees and things like that. You know, when we, when you give the reports, maybe talk about the needs as well as what has been done.
And I believe there used to be a treatment in that.
It was a treatment, that's right.
Yeah.
I think we're branching off.
What we're talking about, we're talking about.
That was the future, correct?
To include needs as well as what has been done.
Thank you.
So get to the root of the problem.
Any other agenda items? All right, public comment, do we have anybody in the chamber that would like to stand? Address counsel? Do you have anything? City managers' report.
Okay, um, I did not write this, so I have to read this. On Wednesday, um, we met with the M E D C and the E D C uh director. And uh the M E D C has officially launched its uh match on May fall twenty twenty-two program round. And we are looking for Albion projects to consider. The match on May is a reimbursement grant program that serves as a tool to support new or expanding place-based businesses by providing up to twenty-five thousand dollars in funding to support an eligible small business through an application submitted, administered, and managed by a local unit of government, downtown development authority, or other downtown management or community development organization where the business is located. There is much more information on the city's website and the link to the M E D C site. Uh, last time we had future agenda items, there was a lot of property maintenance things that came up and some other ones, um. Uh, I have directed the public services director to do these things, but according to the public services director, most of them have all been done already, so I got that information after I wrote this on Thursday, he told me that Friday, so I believe all of these items that are listed have been taken care of. Um, or are close to being done. Uh, there was some discussion about the A B A garage on Eaton Street across from the fire station. Um, I did find out from Ian that we did get bids on that to have it torn down, and it was found out that the bids were from companies that don't do asbestos, and there is asbestos in the building, so we have to look into it with the A B A about how we can uh get rid of the asbestos before we tear that building down. Um, city staffing, you, you asked about that, I listed the positions that are open. Uh, obviously, we announced tonight that the director of public services has been filled, so the remaining positions are listed there on the sheet. I think that was all I had, other than the, the city staff reports. Any questions?
Mayor Tom Jackson, very quickly, we just need to have an update about the A B A board. Did you go to a Thursday?
I did go to the A B A board.
Yeah, so if you don't have it, just put it next week, please.
Um, yeah.
That'd be, yeah, but that's not a lot of.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm still trying to remember what I did every day.
You and the rest of us.
Councilmember Kandemis.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say um that I got good reports about the festival. Um, this is like the best in so many years, so I've heard. Um, I can agree with that, because it's been a long time, um especially with all of us going through COVID and not knowing what to do. Um, so I just wanted to, um, I, I, I really can't uh remember his name, and I'm really um Billy Beers upset about it, what's, what's his name, the chamber guy?
Billy Beers.
I want to really thank you so much. Um, a lot of our out of town visitors, um they were excited. They were excited. Um, but I do want to um ask, um and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I do want to ask um if um you could um possibly just give us some encouraging words um about, we are trying to do everything we can about the incidents that happened at the festival. Um, we are getting, well, I know I'm getting phone calls, but I just want um them to hear your voice to say.
Um, absolutely, uh it, it was a difficult situation to deal with, obviously, we had information about um people from out of town coming with guns to, to shoot uh Albion residents um that we were made up where by school aides and officers in Battle Creek. Um, we were quite concerned about that, we tried to keep an eye on the individuals that uh were uh involved in that uh from Albion. Um, which wasn't an easy thing for us to do, it's not as we wanted to hover over them and, and watch them all day. Um, we had reports of a fight, we had reports uh of a gun involved in that fight. Um, that's all available on video, uh we had eighteen Albion public safety officers on at the time, uh for, or for, give my numbers right here. Yes, four of those eighteen were reserve officers that were working at the time. Um, but uh reserve officers had the police authority of the officer that they're working with. Uh, the reason we had so many officers at the time, that's the entire department that I have currently. Um, they were, we were doing shift change right then, um so it just happened, everybody just happened to be there and was able to respond to the incident. Um, I think that kept it more calm than it would have been if it only been half the department that would have been there. Um, it would have been much more difficult for us to deal with that. Um, it was a simple matter of trying to talk to one young man about what we had been told, uh and other people didn't think we needed to talk to him and tried to keep us from doing that. Uh, which gave us even greater concerns that he possibly had a gun. Um, and so that young man was extremely cooperative with me when I got my hands on him and did exactly what I asked him to do and, and cooperated and was released to his parents a short time later when we had the opportunity to do that, if the rest of the people would have allowed us to do that, we wouldn't have had an incident whatsoever at all, so. Um, but we are reviewing body cam video, we have body cam video from just about every single officer that was there, so there's lots of angles and lots of things to look at. Um, and we're just trying to make sure that uh we review what the officers did, and we also review what the individuals did as well.
Well, we appreciate, the public appreciates the uh, you know, not letting me get weighed on, and so we do appreciate that.
And I'd also like to say, any council members that would like to review any of the video, I'm happy to have you come in and, and watch the video with me.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, um. Okay, the festival was a, 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 a good day here in the city of Albion to a point, um. It's really the main event that we have here in um the city of Albion, it's our, our big bang before the fall season starts, um. It was very disturbing to see um some of the activity that had taken place, um. And I know that we'll have further discussion throughout the week to try to make sure that um everything was handled in accordance to what the expectation from um everyone in the community is, um. So just so everyone knows, there will be more um discussions held and hopefully we can all come to a, a, a resolution as far as um how things will be handled going forward, so that we don't have such a chaotic event take place in the future. Thank you.
I would also like to thank Councilwoman Williams, who was there and assisting in calming people down and getting people back, uh it was very much appreciated, his assistance.
Thank you.
So I do echo Councilwoman Lawler's sentiment that this really was a great festival weekend. Um, so many people came back home because it was perfect weather, um, I would call it type of you know, event that many people look forward to on a regular basis. So um, you know, similar to everybody else, heard many compliments. And I was also going to thank Billy Beers, because I know he worked around the clock the week prior to make sure it went off without a hitch. Having the vendors on the street, you know, and then all of the food in Silver Plaza, um, it was just a great mix. All of the food um in Silver Plaza, um it was just a great mix, um seeing the. Laughter of the kids, you know, smiles, you know, seeing people come home and to say, wow, this is great. That that really, that means that we've done a good job, but I also wanted to thank, you know. Our public works folks, because again, they worked around the clock too, to make sure that the cables were out, the electricals were working. You know, that so things would run smoothly, um the police department, who was very visible morning and night. It it takes a village, it took our village.
It really does.
But the people who came home were impressed, so that is a huge kudos to everybody involved, yes.
I like the changes that occurred, so in terms of vendors being on the street, then they were not.
Yes.
You could walk, you know, rather than walking through.
Yeah, it was it was a well-upped and changed, yeah, it was it was a beautiful event.
Yeah, exactly, so a whole weekend of great stuff.
Yeah, as well as the dedication uh to uh Macintosh, so that was nice.
And also the alumni event.
Yeah, alumni event.
The alumni event was built.
Because so many people came up for that too.
Yeah, yeah, that that was, that was big.
Believe me, I was tired. So, any other comments? Awesome, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Call in favor, say aye.
I agree.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned eight oh nine PM, work everybody, eight oh nine, eight oh nine.